Morning, everyone. So good to see a full room this morning and welcome. Glad to have our sheriff here with us, Sheriff Gullidge, and also Teresa Lyons with the school board. Thank you, elected officials, for being here. At this time, I'll call the Paulding County Board of Commissioners' work session to order here on December 13, 2022. If you have your cellphone on, it's a good time to silence that. And Marshall, if you bring the list for it, I'd appreciate it. We always begin with invocation and a pledge, and I've asked our county attorney, Jason Phillips, who's always accommodating, to start us off right with that. Stand if you're able.
Dear Lord, we just come to you now, Father, this board and staff and the people here in this room. Lord, we pray for your divine guidance on the decisions that will be discussed and made on this four-page agenda. Lord, we ask that you would help this board to make decisions consistent with your will, consistent in a way that loves people. Lord, we come to you here. We want to lift up Tommy Graham's family, Father, somebody who sat here and served this county as a post-three commissioner for so long and has since gone home to be with you. Father, you've described a peace that you can provide, a peace that passes all understanding. Lord, we say that phrase oftentimes, and we don't think about it, but what that means is a comfort that exists in a time when it shouldn't, in a time where we can't understand why we have peace or why we have comfort, given all that's going on around us. Lord, we'd ask that you would be with Tommy's family, to be with Kathy and his daughters, and give them a peace that passes understanding in this Christmas with Tommy being gone, knowing full well that he is in a better place. Lord, guide us as we celebrate the coming of a Savior this Christmas, Lord, a Savior to save us from poor decision-making, to save us from times where we don't love other people, to save us from times where we perhaps might make decisions that aren't in accordance with what you'd want us to do. And we thank you for the forgiveness that comes through that son that was born in the next two weeks, so many long years ago. Thank you for that Savior, and in Jesus's name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you, Jason. Much appreciated. The minutes of the November 10, 2022 work session are available for your review at the back table. Under announcements this morning, we begin with our Team Paulding segment and recognize the Employee of the Month as Joel Norton from the Water Treatment Center, the Operations Class III Worker at the Copper Mine Wastewater Treatment Plant. So let's watch that together.
I nominated Joel Norton for Employee of the Month. He is one of my most dedicated workers. He has this thing that he says whenever I ask him to do something. "I'll do it." It's just that simple. Yes, he's been with Paulding County for 10 or 11 years, and he's worked with me for about seven of those years. And it's been the same since day one. It's, Joel, can you go over there and do this? I get it done. I'll do it. Joel's an early man. He comes in at 5:00 in the morning, and he does all the lab work, does all the sampling, does all the lab work, and then whatever else has to be fixed. He's usually done with lab work about 9:00 in the morning, and then he starts doing maintenance, cleaning the plant, whatever has to be done. Joel's a very dedicated individual, and not only to the plan, I mean, whatever he does, he's dedicated to. I just appreciate all the work that he does. Whatever he does, that's less than I have to do. We're other people, too. We're always shorthanded, so we're always trying to get things done the best we can, and he takes up a lot of the slack.
Awesome. Good job, team. Next, under announcements, the Board of Commissioners this morning is very glad to recognize the Information Technology Department. They're all here. So glad to have you all here and to recognize this prestigious GMIS G2 Award for PEXIP Detention Video Communication Systems. Well, what is GMIS? It's Government Managed Information Systems. It's overseen by the Association of Government Information Technology Leaders. It's an international organization, 35 states, New Zealand, Canada, Sweden, UK, the Netherlands, and more. Got a letter from the association president, Robert McQueen, and he said this. "With this award, you're being honored for your outstanding service and your dedication to your county. We commend you for your continued efforts to be more efficient and excellent in everything that you do."
And to describe this project award, it's for a video management solution designed and installed for the new detention facility, with safety being the top priority. The system enables courts to connect with the inmates. As a result, inmates do not have to be physically moved from their housing pods, keeping all parties safe. It also enables the public and family to view the proceedings from visitation without entering the courthouse. Also provides remote instructional, religious, and mental health services for all housing pods. As a result, the instructor, staff, and inmates all remain safe, and all the communication is in-house and encrypted. Nothing goes out to the cloud. This system was designed prior to COVID and rode out during COVID before the detention center opened. During the project's design, Paulding County could find no other examples of this technology being used, nor could the jail contractor. Therefore, the internal IT staff had to use imagination and dedication to bring this project to fruition while designing and installing the new facility and maintaining the workload. This project is an example of the innovation and dedication of all the staff in partnership with the sheriff's office. Members of the IT department include...
As I announced your names, would you please come up to receive your certificates, and we'll get a picture. Sam Baloo, one year of service. He's a desktop support technician. Charles Caprio, five years of service, system analyst. Andy Cavaness, six years of service, and he's retired. Linda Fennell, 27 years of service, and she's a technical coordinator. Robert Gunning, four years of service, desktop support technician. Wayne Lemon, 17 years of service, systems administrator. Will Lyons, 21 years of service, and he's our director. Daniel Rodriguez, seven years of service, and he's our division manager.
I'm going to read the certificate itself and pass them out to you guys. The certificate reads, "In recognition of outstanding support and dedication to Paulding County, Georgia, we greatly appreciate your exceptional service to the Information Technology Department." And Mr. Will Lyons.
You know, you can't lead a team of champion woodcutters unless you sharpen your own saw. So we want to recognize an achievement of our IT director, Will Lyons. He has successfully graduated from the 2021-2022 Certified Government Chief Information Officer Program at the University of North Carolina at Chapel Hill School of Government. So this is a local, government-specific program for the CIOs in the nation. It covers, it's about 240 hours in length, and the course covers strategic technology planning, communication, emerging technology trends, risk assessment, management, acquisition management, change management, leadership, cybersecurity, and legal issues related to technology. Will Lyons is one of the 19 local government, state agency, community college, and K-12 education IT leaders across the nation who successfully completed this national course this year. Over the course of its existence, the program has graduated over 2,000 public-sector technology leaders across the nation. So congratulations to Will and the entire IT team. And here is the award. If you can hold it for the picture.
We're proud of you.
Congratulations.
Board of Commissioners would also like to congratulate Rebecca Meredith, our county clerk, for graduating with a bachelor's degree, a science degree in business administration from Columbia Southern University. Board of Commissioners would like to present the Public Safety Appreciation Award to Eileen Culberson, Animal Control Facility Manager. And Chief Hess has got a word to say about Eileen. As they're walking up, I'll just read you the Public Safety Appreciation Award words here. "In recognition of outstanding service to your community, presented by the Paulding County Board of Commissioners, this 13th day of December, 2022. Signed by all the commissioners," and we'll let her take that home for framing. Go ahead, Charlie.
Thank you, sir. Good morning, commissioners, and thank you. This morning, I am very proud to announce that Eileen Culberson will be the recipient of our 2022 Public Safety Appreciation Award. As most of you are aware, on the week of November 8, 2022, our Paulding County Animal Control, along with several other agencies, including the Paulding County Sheriff's Office, the DA's office, and several of our outside agencies, conducted an operation that resulted in the rescue of over 100 dogs that were in abusive and horrific living conditions. Eileen and her staff worked night and day, often running on no sleep whatsoever, right? And they did that to ensure that all the dogs were processed and given proper medical attention. Eileen and her staff went above and beyond expectations until every last animal was loaded on a truck to start a new life in a safe location. It was amazing to watch the dedication that she and her staff have on a day-to-day basis in a career that's most often a thankless profession. Well, that's not the case today. So congratulations, Eileen, on your award, and I appreciate everybody that was involved in that operation. There's too many to list, but you know who you are. Thank you.
She had no idea she was going to get this, so it was nice to surprise somebody. Board of Commissioners would like to present a proclamation to the family of Robert Gober for his many years of service to the community. I'm going to read the proclamation, and we'd like to have you all come up for a picture and for thanks. And also, Commissioner Galloway has got a few things to say. So proclamation for Robert Douglas Doug Gober. Whereas Doug Gober was born in Paulding County, Georgia on March 11, 1937, where he resided for the entirety of his life, and whereas Mr. Gober served in the Navy from 1959 to 1963, in 1978, he began a career in law enforcement, serving as the City of Dallas Chief of Police, Deputy Sheriff for Paulding County, and the Chief Administrative Officer. And whereas in March of 1993, Doug transferred to purchasing agent for the Paulding County Courthouse, and whereas in March of 1995, Doug was promoted to Department Head over planning and zoning, engineering, permits, and inspections. And whereas in August of 1995, Doug was selected as the Chief Marshal of the Paulding County Marshals Bureau. And whereas on June 25, 2022, Doug was appointed to the Paulding County Board of Tax Assessors. Doug was elected as Vice Chairman in September of 2006 and elected Chairman in February of 2020. And whereas Mr. Robert Douglas Gober passed away on October 30, 2022, therefore, I, David L. Carmichael, Chairman of the Paulding County Board of Commissioners, do hereby proclaim December 13, 2022, as Doug Gober Day for his faithful service to the citizens and the community of Paulding County. The family would come up. We would like to recognize you, please.
But anyway, just wanted to say that I really appreciate someone who loves Paulding County, like Doug Gober loved Paulding County. When I was out knocking on doors, I pulled up in a driveway and saw a guy out there working in his yard, and he kind of looked at me like, "Are you trouble?" You know? So I wasn't sure if I should really go talk to him or not, but I decided to go ahead and do it. And I went up, and as soon as I introduced myself and started telling him a little bit about me, he said, "I know who you are." And then he reminded me that we knew each other from when he was a marshal many years ago, and introduced me to some of his family, which I very much appreciated, just like him, salt-of-the-earth, hard-working people that make Paulding County better every day. So thank you to all his family for being here, those who were able to make it. We appreciate you, and we appreciate the service of your husband and father and grandfather.
Thank you. We have no invited guests this morning. Bit awards, we've got three. Item number two is to award the Graves Road Sidewalk Project to the low bidder, Hasbun Construction LLC, in the amount of $274,062.07, funded by special purpose local option sales tax SLOST located in Post 4. Ms. Pollard is on the list to talk along with Mr. Jones, so we'll let Mr. Jones go first.
Thank you. Good morning. Paulding County Finance Department advertised the DOT's Graves Road Sidewalk Project. This project is located in Post 4. There's a section of Graves Road that does not have sidewalk between essentially east of Eagle Rock Drive to east of Graves Spur. This is approximately .33 miles in length. This project, if approved, would add a five-foot sidewalk on that location, along with curbing, drainage structures, et cetera. This would connect all the sidewalk along Graves Road. There would be one continuous sidewalk from Cedar Crest Road all the way to Harmony Grove Church Road. The bids for this project were opened on November 11, 2022. There were three bidders. Hasbun Construction was the lowest bidder in the amount of $274,062.07. This bid was under the original engineer's estimate by 3%. If approved, the funding would be allocated from SLOST, and the project would have a 12-month completion date from the notice of proceed issuance. I'll say our engineering division worked hard on this to get this performed with the concept and its initial design, so we're happy to be able to present this to you for consideration.
Any questions for George or Tabitha? Thank you very much.
No questions, just comment. It's project some that, as far as my represent that area, that I have many people reached out wanting to see this happen. So I'm glad to finally see it get done. You know, we've been talking about it for a few years now, and just glad to get it... Engineering, I know that takes a while and stuff like that. So thank you for getting it moved ahead and pushed forward, and thank you for your, not just you, but your whole team, for getting it done.
Yeah, exactly. Engineering staff and construction, they worked on this diligently to try to meet a schedule that we'd set out, and we did. Again, we had held off for years not putting in sidewalk along that section, hoping development would take care of it, but it hasn't happened to this date, so we decided to move forward.
Are you going to enjoy it, Ms. Rollins?
Oh, yes, sir. What if I meant, excuse me, I'm going to ask, when is the projected start date? Because I know Eagle Rock Honor will be there.
Yeah, we don't have a start date right now. Honestly, we would have to award it first and then get with the contractor. We did put a 12-month completion time. We just didn't want to be locked in by having a short completion date and getting high prices. We'd rather be able to kind of fit this work into a contractor's schedule. So it obviously won't take 12 months to perform the work, but we wanted to have that timeline built in.
How long a stretch is that?
It's .33 miles, roughly.
Yeah. Thanks so much.
Thank you.
Item three is to award the transfer station hauling contract to the lowest responsible bidder, which is Capital Waste Services, in the amount of $49.97 per ton. And Ms. Pollard, tell us some more about that.
Good morning. Recently, our current hauler for the landfill had notified us that there would be a significant increase. So in response to that, we went out to bid. We had three participants in the bid, and while it is still an increase, we are recommending award to the lowest bidder, and they will, it's Capital Waste Services, in the amount of $49.97 a ton. And that includes both hauling and disposal. So unless you have any questions.
Any questions from the board? Prices are going up everywhere, aren't they, Tabitha?
Prices are going up everywhere.
All right. Item number four is also Ms. Pollard and Colonel Hutton wants to make his way up. It's to award the TASER purchase to Axon Enterprises Incorporated in the amount of $641,795.63 to be paid for by our SLOST funds again, and it'll be used for a purchase over a five-year period. Doesn't look like Colonel Hutton.
We have a substitute today. So the sheriff's office did make a purchase in 2015 with the last SLOST, and then in 2017, 18, and 19, those TASERS have been replaced. TASERS came with a three-year lifespan, so a portion of those are being cared for very carefully to make them last so that we can get to this purchase. And some of them are reaching, they're all reaching the end of life, and they're not being supported any longer by the company. We've purchased from TASER International. TASER International was bought out by Axon Enterprises, and so we're staying with the, or we're recommending that we stay with the current form of TASER. And Major Langford's going to discuss the importance and the problems it would be if you did change from one TASER type to another. And this purchase will be for 250 TASERS with eight spares, and the total cost is $641,795.63. And that's for an, over the annual cost, it's an annual cost of $127,393.13 for the five years, and there were the five-year warranty. So.
Yes.
Add your pin.
Good morning.
Good morning.
As Tabitha said, our current TASERS that we are carrying right now, our deputies and detention officers are carrying right now, are, they were purchased in 2015, and the life expectancy on them is about five years. So we've made them limp on a little bit longer than that. We're going on eight years now. Unfortunately, the TASER does not last forever. And Axon, who we're wanting to purchase the TASERS from, they will not service or repair or replace those weapons systems beyond their, anything past five years. So it is, we're in dire need to move forward and get to the next platform that they have.
I don't think we have any volunteers to test them out.
We, if y'all want to, we can definitely do that. We've got some training coming up with them, so you're more than welcome to come to that.
I could, could you, could I put a name in the hat?
Absolutely.
You've been looking to get my wife a Christmas present.
Tell me which one, Brian. Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
This morning, we've got, we're privileged and honored to have Robert Cabrera with the Keep Paulding Beautiful Commission to bring us an update. So, Robert, we hadn't heard from you for a while, but I know you've been out there with your team, working hard.
Saving money. We're not spending any. I have a... Excuse me for a moment. It's a presentation, I promise. So thank you for letting me come up here and speak. I'll try not to take more than an hour. You laugh. Some of you know that. So what I want to talk about is what Keep Paulding Beautiful's been doing. So what I want to talk about is what Keep Paulding Beautiful has been doing in the past 2022 and what we're looking forward to doing next year. We think we've made a pretty good impact on what, what our job is and what we see, things happening here in the county. Can you hear me? So a little introduction real quick. The vision of Keep Paulding Beautiful is to create an atmosphere of cooperation and to lead by example. I think I'll put my glasses on. What do you think? KPB inspires and educates in order to show our neighbors that we live, play, and work in a community that is clean. We take pride in who we are and where we live. We, as a community, are better and stronger than we are as individuals. Our goal at KPB is to recognize and invite everyone, everyone, to be part of the solution, not part of the problem. We want to lead the way to a better life for everyone in our community. So the numbers I'm about to show you, those, these are our 2022 numbers through November, meaning that this does not include anything that we're doing here in December. For 2022, Keep America Beautiful, we did get the President's Circle Award, again. Keep Georgia Beautiful Foundation, we received the Governor's Circle Award. For this year, we did 231 events. That's not including December. We'll probably add another 10 to that. Our volunteers for the year are 4,462. Our volunteer hours, 18,929. These numbers are mind-boggling. I had to run them a couple of times just to make sure I wasn't making it up. The total benefits for the county, if we had to pay to have this done, $454,296. I know, that's scary, isn't it? The cost benefit, which would be a cost that we actually incurred to do, incurred? Is that the right word? That we, that was in place for us, was $172.64. Now, that is not an actual dollar amount we spent. That is based on an hourly rate comparison between these two. So the difference was $282,232 that we saved the county and the citizens of Paulding County. Here's the real mind-bogger. Actually, the next couple are. The participants for the year are 69,002. I don't know who the two are. 69,002. Those are folks who didn't volunteer but were part of what we were doing in some form. The youth we reached this year, also a new record, 2,237. We did that through our Reduce, Reuse, Recycle Program, STEM, and an Enviroscapes Program. Our social media reach this year was, this is an estimate based on what social media is telling us, 19,450. I'm pulling this up because it gives us a total number for the year, touch points for Keep Paulding Beautiful of 95,151. Keeping, if you're keeping track, that's a little bit over half the population of Paulding County. That's pretty incredible. Move to the next one, because I'm going to talk about partnerships a little bit here and what, what this is, it gives you a list of the partners that we work with. Those that we do events with, we do programs with, on a regular basis, most of these are. I want to point a couple of them out. For example, the Pastors Alliance is meeting in Hiram at this point, and we're doing cleanups there on a monthly basis. The 4H Extension, um, excuse me, the 4H Club, we are actually getting together with them and doing Enviroscapes. They're helping us to go into schools and do Enviroscapes on a regular basis. We're also going to have, Tommy Leonard is going to lead training, and we're going to certify, I think about six people, to be part of our Enviroscapes team. So that's coming up. We also, this year, and it's not on the list, we actually teamed up with a lot of the high schools this year. We did a cleanup at one of the cemeteries out in North Paulding, where we'd had 60 cadets go to a cemetery and do a cleanup. With that was a historian from the church where the cemetery's at, and that historian explained the different aspects of what and how old the cemetery was, going back into the early 1800s. Pretty cool. We worked with 120 cadets out at Hiram High School to do a cleanup on the campus. These are the kind of things we do. This is the one, this is probably one of the coolest things we've ever done. And that is that, at the airport, I'll wave to those in the back. At the airport, we had, we teamed up through Georgia Highlands College and Kennesaw State University with a group called Upward Bound. We took 60-plus students out there and spent the day cleaning. We spent the day planting. Of course, the airport doesn't do cleaning. It's absolutely fantastically beautiful. But we planted, we pulled weeds, and we put down mulch, and it was fantastic. It was a great day. They got to tour the museum, they got to go to the petting zoo, which really kind of tricked some of them because they thought we were going to have animals. And that was a big question, so next time maybe we'll bring a cat or something out there. So, but it was such a good program, and that's the second time we've worked with Upward Bound through Kennesaw State University to do this. So it was a good, really good program for us. Those are some of their insignias. So I want to move on to, any questions about 2022? Comments?
Great job.
Thank you. Thank you. It was a huge team effort. Huge team effort. So there's no way we could do those kind of numbers. Looking forward to some changes this coming year, too. Yes, sir.
I honestly feel guilty because I hadn't been to one this year. I went to the airport last year, but do you have families that come out?
Yes, sir, absolutely. Do on a regular basis. They come out with the kids and we, of course, families with kids can't really get involved in anything on roadside cleanups, but I'll get into the roadside cleanups here in a minute. So it's, but they do come to libraries especially, because we do, we, you know, each one of the libraries, we try to do something annually there. We do something at the schools. We've just teamed up with the middle schools, if, some of you probably know, all of you know, is that we just, the middle schools have just gotten computers for our students. They've, we had a, we were contacted by one of our folks that we do stuff with on a regular basis from PB Rich, Kelly Nun, and she actually got ahold of us and said, hey, we don't know what we're doing with this cardboard. So we've teamed up with all the middle schools in the county, collecting the cardboard and taking it to the recycle center. If not, it would go into the trash. Costs us money instead of actually us getting paid for it. It's a recycle item instead of a, you know, a trash item at that point. So that, again, was just through positive us contacting relationships, things like that. That's what, that's what we do. So looking forward to 2023. We're starting a new ambassadors program. Those are folks that have been in part of the Keep Paulding Beautiful Ward or Commission as, in past years. Right now, we have six, all six have signed on, and will be a part of our programming next year. Their job basically is to represent us in the county. We are also signing on five new members to our commission. Those we'll get into later, next year, and so we can have them get started. But it's going to be, it's going to bring us to a total of 15, which will be our max on our commission. Then what we're going to do next year is going to be a little bit different. We're, we're looking at the idea of giving each month a theme based on what happens that month. For example, the best one is February, which of course Arbor Day falls in February in Georgia. And so we're going to look at February, and we're going to, all social media, all contact in the community is going to be about trees. It's going to be about Arbor Day. And we're going to do that for each one of our months, and at that point, we're going to, each one's going to have its own agenda for what we're going to do in the way of social media contacts, cleanups, programs are all going to be focused on that. But all those programs have to fall under four headings. We've, we've committed to do, do these as part of our mission, litter, recycle, education, relationship. It's got to fall under one of those four. If it doesn't, then we will look at not doing it. It's not going to be part of what we do. My wife pointed out last night, my beautiful, sweet, wonderful wife that you all know, is that our R-E-L, if I'd have just erased it a little bit, well, it actually spells reel, in a way. So next year, we're going to get reel. One of the things I want to mention here, it's part of what we're going to be considering as we do our cleanups, as we look at programs, if we look at advance, is that next year's going to be called the Year of Construction, for obvious reasons. If you drive through the county for a minute, you see that we have construction going on. We've deemed, basically, that it's not really advantageous for us to go out and clean the side of a road where they're doing construction, because it's not going to do any good. So we're going to focus other areas. These, these events, these programs that we're going to do are going to be more internal toward our, what we, you know, the, the facility here. We can do cleanups here. We can do libraries, schools, those kind of things are going to be our main focus. Build those relationships through those events and programs, and that's what we plan to do. So we're looking forward to a really good year. These numbers are going to be hard to beat, but I think we can do it. We're also looking at the possibility, at some point, we'll divide the county up a little bit and have, one of the great things that's happened this year is post four. We've got some folks up there who are going to be part of our commission at some point. They are doing cleanups on a weekly basis. I mean, we see them out there every week. They're contacting me on a weekly basis, saying, hey, we picked up, can you have this picked up by the DOT? And it is. So that's, that's what I've got. Any questions?
I don't have another question, but I got a comment because, you know, all politicians and people running for office, we talk about commercialization and economic development. We'd like to balance out our residential with a lot more commercial. And that doesn't happen unless our county's clean and beautiful for people to come out and look at it, Robert, and maybe you sometimes even forget that. But, you know, the, the big tax picture and revenue that can come in economically is a result of all of us pitching in as one big county team and keeping our county beautiful.
Absolutely. Absolutely. And I, some of the things I think we can look at, just throwing it out here now, is that we, the construction that we have going on is great. The county's growing, this is awesome. We're looking at this for the next year at least, two years probably, is to look at those areas and say, how can we affect the construction companies? I grew up in construction, so I know that every commercial job we ever did, 100% of the time, we had to clean up daily. If you're in a shopping center doing a commercial job, you have to clean up daily. So I look at this and say, what can we do to help this along for our construction companies? There are partners making this county grow, but what can we do to make that work a little better? How can we affect what they do? How can we affect the, the companies that we hire to cut our grass? We've seen this year that where they've cut and then picked up. So we have a day or two where litter's just everywhere because they've cut it. Now, I understand the process. I understand that it's easier for them to come behind and do that, but they leave it for a couple of days, and our county looks terrible because it's all part of, and, and a lot of these, I'll, I'll admit, they're state roads. The roads that we have little control over, this kind of thing, other than helping with the contracts and those kind of things. The, I think the, the idea that they can go through ahead of time, pick up before they cut, is, probably would make a huge difference. Grass is this tall, they can't see it. So what do we do with that? I don't know. These are just kind of questions that I love throwing out. But most of all, I want to thank you for your support. This group always supports us, always helps, and whether you can be there or not, I know that you got my back, and that's huge.
Does Steve Kaker ever do anything when he comes out?
He's probably napping right now. I haven't looked back at this point, but he's probably asleep. Somebody woke him up, sorry. He knew we'd get at least one shot in, so, okay. Anything else? Because...
I just want to thank you, Robert. Personally, you guys do an awesome job.
Thank you.
Something my dad used to tell me is you never get a second chance to make a first impression. You guys are the tip of the spear when it comes to keeping Paulding beautiful, and I want to thank you personally.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that. Thank you for always, like I say, always supporting us. This, this team's always got our back, so we're part of the team.
Thanks again, Robert.
And if you haven't been on a cleanup, you should try it. I've been on several, and you'd be surprised of the things you might pick up.
Well, and one of the things I want to mention, I think that those who come out to do and help with cleanups, they find out it's really, it's not really about picking up trash. It's just, it's a lot of fun. We actually have a good time with it. So thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
No one has signed up for agenda items this morning. Under the consent agenda, I do have to read it in the morning. And item five is to adopt the Paulding County Board of Commissioners' proposed regular meeting schedule for the 2023 calendar year. Number six is to adopt the proposed application and public hearing dates for the Planning Commission, the Zoning Board of Appeals, the Stream Buffer Development Waiver Review Committee, and the Development Waiver Review Committee for the 2023 calendar year. Number seven is to approve the proposed transfer station designated holiday schedule for the 2023 calendar year. Number eight is to authorize the chairman to enter into an development agreement with Cedar Crest Station of Georgia, Owner Two LLC, in the amount of $82,540 for participation and mitigation to address traffic concerns on Cedar Crest Road, of course, located in post four. Number nine is to authorize the chairman to approve the transfer of $9,599.07, that's not cents, $9,599.07 square feet, which is .22 acres, of right-of-way, and 2,243.15 square feet, which is .051 acres, of permanent easement to Georgia Department of Transportation for PI number 621720 for a purchase price of $800. It's located in post one. Item 10 is to approve the sheriff's office request to surplus the plaque from the previous Paulding County Sheriff's Office and Detention Center, location at 25 Industrial Way North, Dallas, Georgia. And number 11 is to approve the sheriff's office asked to surplus and retire K-9 Bickle from his police K-9 duties to live out the rest of his days with the current handler, Sergeant Ricky Waters. Number 12 is to authorize the county manager to engage Southeastern Resource Source Group Incorporated to provide consulting services for the county. Number 13 is authorize the chairman to enter into an agreement with Tax Specialist of GA to research and submit documents requesting a sales tax refund from the Georgia Department of Revenue for eligible wastewater and drinking water treatment projects. 14 is to authorize the chairman to accept grant number K23-8-016 to provide additional surveillance within the drug court in the amount of $24,960 with a required match of $3,404. The grant period is from January 1st, 2023, to June 30th, 2023. Number 15 is to authorize the chairman to accept grant K23-8-017 to provide additional surveillance within the mental health court in the amount of $11,400 with a required match of $1,555. The grant period is from January 1st, 2023, through June 30th, 2023. Number 16 is authorize the chairman to sign all documents necessary to execute grant agreement with the Environmental Protection Agency, EPA, regarding the reimbursement of the watershed property at the reservoir. Did you get all that, Rebecca? Okay. Number 17 is to authorize the chairman to accept the proposal from Rothelis to update a water and sewer financial model in the amount of $54,900, and that's all the consent agenda. Would any of the commissioners like to move any of those items to regular business for further discussion? Hearing, hearing no response on that, we'll leave them in the consent agenda?
Can I say something, though?
Yes, ma'am.
I want to say Ricky Waters, K-9 Bickle, I've seen him all over this county. He has worked very hard, and though I hate to see him retire, I wish him well.
We have no, no old business this morning, so let's wrap this thing up with our new business items, which begins with item 18, which is discuss action to adopt Resolution 22-4040 supporting the project to provide lighting and markings to make 500 feet of existing concrete pavement usable as additional runway to bring the total runway length to 6,005 feet at the Paulding County Northwest Atlanta Airport, located, of course, in post two. We have Mr. Green and Airport Manager Terry Tibbetts with us to discuss.
Good morning. Robert Cabrera is a tough act to follow. I'll try to, I'll try my best. This project, just as read, makes the runway a little longer, which is obviously safer, given that the $25,000 cost will be absorbed by the airport authority. This is what I would call a no-brainer. Terry, Terry is here if you have any technical questions about what it actually accomplishes, and I'll just get out of the way. Thank you.
This is a very simple project. The 500 feet of extra runway was built at the time the airport was built, and we're just now seeking to put that into service. In order to do that, we need resolutions from my board, the airport authority. They've already passed that at our last meeting. You, as co-sponsors, have to agree that this is something that we want to do moving forward. We will then notify the FAA and get their approval to put this additional pavement into service. The components are already there at the airport. They were purchased with the bond referendum back in 2013, when we were widening and lengthening the taxiway and the runway, and the parts have all been sitting there in the storehouse ever since. So the cost is really just the labor, primarily to install the extra 500 feet of lighting in order to finally bring this part of the runway into service. So as Scott said, pretty much a no-brainer on this one. We're going to cover the cost out of our already approved operating and maintenance budget. So we're not seeking any additional funds. I looked on the awards here at the front to see if Mr. Baker had nominated me for an award for coming up here and asking for something for the airport and no money. But he didn't. And so if there are any questions, I'll be happy to address them at this time.
I started to make a comment that wouldn't be a very good one, so never mind.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. 19 is discuss action to adopt ordinance 20-15 and ordinance adopting the Paulding County Department of Transportation Right-of-Way Engineering Qualification Manual and amending the development regulation to codify the said manual. Mr. Jones?
The DOT Right-of-Way Engineering Qualification Manual has been created to govern the minimum qualifications of professional engineering firms that perform design-related work on roads and right-of-way owned by Paulding County. Those would be roads, like I said, that the county owns, not roads inside the city or GDOT or private property, simply county roads. This basically would include other ancillary services to support design work. Within the manual, a qualification process is established to how professional engineering firms obtain and eventually renew certificates of qualification. Basically, the right-of-way engineering manual requires that firms be, that perform these design-related works be certified in four different area classes. Those area classes would be rural roadway design, urban roadway design, traffic operation studies, and traffic operations design. This manual is crafted based on the Georgia Department of Transportation Engineering Manual, and those firms that are already certified by GDOT in those area classes would be automatically certified by Paulding County in those area classes. We believe this manual will help mitigate issues for the county by requiring professional firms to have staff that's qualified to be able to perform this work based on the work that they've done in the past. They can show where they perform this work. That's all we're asking. This will provide quality control and quality assurances. Essentially, our roads and right-of-way are assets. We want to make sure that these assets are managed correctly. We've worked with the county attorney significantly on this process, and we believe we have something that'll both protect our roads and right-of-ways, but also work with development.
Okay. No questions. We'll move on to number 20, which is also George. Discuss action to adopt ordinance 22-16 and ordinance amending the provision regarding the parking of vehicles on county-owned property.
Like you said, Chairman, this is to update the current ordinance regarding the parking of vehicles on county property. The current language in the ordinance is very limited and does not address occurrences of long-term parking on county-owned lots, properties, commercial parking. This updated ordinance provides language where essentially states that vehicles cannot be left on a county-owned property or lot when that facility is closed. You cannot park in a county-owned parking area of county-owned property if the owner is not utilizing the county-owned services unless authorized by a department head. And the third is it's unlawful to park any private vehicle on a county-owned parking area or other county-owned property for a period of more than 12 hours, or park a commercial or freight-carrying vehicle in the trailer in such places unless authorized by the county manager. So essentially, we crafted this update based on similar language from other municipalities in the area. So again, I think we believe this will help kind of crack down and give some enforcement language for these instances that have occurred.
Would this allow one of our fantastic deputies with the SO to call the county manager up in the middle of the night and say there was a vehicle?
I have no problem with anybody calling Frank in the middle of the night, but I'm not going to be the one that actually, you know, approves that.
That's a good addition. All right. Number 21, and thank you, George.
Thank you.
Is to discuss action to approve the increase of the transfer station gate rate from $55 per tonne to $75 per tonne effective January 1st, 2023.
Good morning, everyone. This request relates to bid award number three, the transfer station hauling contract. When that fee was raised, the transfer station staff, Community Development's presenting this because Bruce Coyle, our county engineer, is sort of over the landfill. So that's why we're presenting this. So we are proposing to raise the gate rate from $55 per tonne to $75 per tonne effective January 1st, 2023. The only other change would be currently the minimum charge of $20 is a 700-pound max. That charge will still be $20, but it will be a 500-pound max.
Any questions for Ann? What's the last time we changed, increased, you know? Just, it's a question for Bruce.
But just give a little insight, Dave, being that across every county and city across Georgia has had such an increase. We're probably lagging behind. I know it seemed like a large increase, and it is. It's been a big bite for me to have to chew off just in my own business in the last few years, or mostly in the last six months, we've seen such a large increase. And we're right in line. You know, I hate it. I mean, inflation. But, you know, fuel at $5 a gallon, and those trucks get about five miles to the gallon. It doesn't take long to add up to additional costs. And you got, you know, wages has went up tremendously. You know, we started seeing it probably, you know, nine months ago, really started kicking in, and it was just a shock to me then. It's still a shock now. So, and I hope that we can post this and get it out to our haulers as soon as possible so that they will be able to adjust their rates. I know most, you know, companies would be billing coming for the first quarter next year, and I imagine they're waiting, hopefully, to send out that new increase. So if we can just post it and make sure that we let everyone know.
Well, I appreciate everyone involved, our county manager and Bruce and George for getting this on before the first of the year because we can't afford not to have that available. All right. Moving on to number 22, and we're almost complete. Discuss action to authorize a notice to proceed with the Northeast Loop Transmission Main Project and approve the guaranteed maximum price not to exceed $14,190,000. Uses ARPA funds, that's American Recovery Act, that'll be used for this project, which is located in post one and also partially in post four.
Good morning. The Board of Commissioners approved Phase One of progressive design build for the Northeast Loop Water Transmission Main. This is over 26,000 feet of pipe that will be tying our system together that allows us to use from 67% of the water that we currently use to be in 100% water coming from the reservoir. As part of the initial Phase One that was approved, they designed to a 30% stage, at which point they give us a guaranteed maximum price. The guaranteed maximum price is $14,190,000. As the plans go further, the risk to the contractor goes down, but this is a guaranteed max price not to exceed. And we are hoping for the approval to go through Phase Two, which is construction with the award of this project. And this is funded from ARPA funds.
Do you recall the length of that loop?
It's a little bit over 26,000 feet of 24-inch and 16-inch pipe.
Any other questions? Thank you, Ray.
Thank you.
And on to 23, which is discuss action to authorize the chairman to enter into a supplemental agreement with Trans Systems Incorporated in the amount of $589,456.38 for preliminary engineering design services for the Cedar Crest Road Widening Project from Harmony Grove Church Road to the Cobb County Line, again funded by SPOST, located in post four.
On December 12th, 2017, the Board of Commissioners approved entering into a contract with Trans Systems for approximately $2.5 million for preliminary engineering design services for the Cedar Crest Road Widening Project from Harmony Grove Church Road to the Cobb County Line. At this time, five years plus, or five years, about five years into the project, additional items are required to continue and finalize the preliminary engineering design, such as survey, roundabout design, staging plans, concept alternatives, water quality structures in lieu of detention ponds, traffic updates, landscaping plans, air and noise studies, foundation investigation, and also just different areas where homes have been built, subdivisions, et cetera, properties changed hands. For the supplemental, we're asking for an amount of $589,456.38, which should be added to the current contract. This allocation will be sufficient to complete the preliminary engineering design plan process. As you said, the funding will be allocated from SPOST.
Any questions for Mr. Jones? He's got the next one also, which is number 24. Discuss action to authorize the chairman to approve and execute the application for the Georgia Department of Transportation Fiscal Year 2023 Local Maintenance and Improvement Grant, L-MIG, in the amount of $1,996,083.90, and the required 30% match from the county of $598,825.17. General funds will be used for the required match.
Each year, the L-MIG grants each city or county receives funding based on a formula amount. That formula takes into account the county's population, the centerline road mileage compared to the entire state of Georgia, population and road miles. The L-MIG grant for fiscal year 2023, GDOT has awarded the county $1,996,083.90. One million, 996,083.90. This is 2% more than fiscal year 2022. The county with this funding is required to match 30% of the grant. Our portion of that 30% would be $598,825.17. This money we can utilize for many different things. We typically utilize this for paving. At this point in time, to complete the application, we simply have to encumber the money by telling GDOT that we're going to use this money for certain projects. We've picked out three roads that we can utilize for paving. We'll send this list to GDOT along with the application package, and they will process. We have to have this application into GDOT by February 1st, 2023. So this is simply essentially taking care of that application process. At any point in time, we can change out the roads on that list. We just simply want to encumber the money at this point in time.
I know y'all rate all the roads. Is that online, available?
Not yet, Chairman. You know, it's something that we could do. We're looking at different electronic packages, asset management package that would allow you to do that. You know, I would love it if we had a package where it almost had green, yellow, and red, and you could actually go on there and pick out, you know, roads. I would say would, green would be in excellent, good shape, to a red would, maybe would need work. So hopefully, with enough funding, we could get all roads to green.
Thanks so much, George. Appreciate it. And new business item 25. Discuss action to authorize the approval of a change order number two for Magnum Construction, the amount of $43,860.60 for removal, I'm sorry, yeah, that's right, for removal of additional unsuitable soils and stone installation as recommended by Nova at Mulberry Rock Park, again using SPOST funds for this change order located in post two. And Michael Justice is already at the podium to answer your question?
Ready to go. Nova is our geotechnical contractor that we have. They've been watching over the project for us. Basically, in a nutshell, we've got some unsuitable soils in the area of the culvert and the roadway that's going over the small creek there. They recommend that we get that out and put some rock in it to keep the culvert and the road from disappearing in the creek. Pretty simple stuff, actually. It's not unexpected, given the area that we're working in. And I'd like to point out that it's significantly less than the 14 million that Mr. Wooten is asking for. Any questions? I'll be happy to try to answer them for you.
Hey, Michael, is this change order based on unit cost that was submitted with the original bill?
Yes, sir. And that is in your backup materials that you have.
Completion of that phase while we get...
We get this done. This is kind of holding it up a little bit. The commission work schedule is kind of not played into our hands there. They got to get this culvert in, and that's the last step before doing the finish work there. So I would hope that it's through by late spring.
Thanks so much.
Yes, sir. Thank you all.
That is the conclusion of our regular business. We have Mr. Larry Brown here that has signed up for a non-agenda item, which is voting precincts. Mr. Brown, so glad to have you with us.
Thank you.
Always welcome public comments.
I'm really surprised with this county having 173,000 people that we have in this county. We had one polling place for the runoff election. Cobb County has 766,000 people. They had 12. Douglas County has 145,000 people. They had five. We've got 173,000 people in this county, and I don't know who made the decision. I talked with a Ms. Holden, and anyway, she told me that she was part of the, making the decision that they would only use one polling place. I've lived in Paulding County on and off for a long time, for several years, since 1974. This reminds me of back when Jim Jordan, if any of you guys can remember, Mr. Jordan, fine man, but his idea was to run the county and all the school, all the high school kids go to one high school. Folks, get real. We need to have polling places. You owe the people of this county a position or a place that they can go without having to drive 45 minutes from one side of the county to the other. I rest my case. Thank you.
Thank you. As has become our tradition, if any of the commissioners would like to announce anything or celebrate anything...
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
If I could, before you have those announcements, if I could respond to the presenter, I just wanted to make sure that the record was clear. We did, on election day, have the complete number of precincts that we always have during the day of voting. We did have one location for early... We did have one location for early voting, which was here. So we did have a full complement of sites for the actual day of voting, so I just want to make sure that everyone knows that. Thank you.
Thank you, that clarification. Well, I would like to welcome Jana Regstow back to our county government workforce. You were gone too long, but we're glad to have you back. And the only other thing that I would say is I want everybody to have a safe and fun and meaningful Christmas.
Merry Christmas, everybody.
No other comments? I don't want to cut anybody off. Okay, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Executive session.
Oh, yeah, we do have the requirement to go into executive session. However, we don't return here.
We'll be adjourned from executive session.
We'll adjourn from executive session, so I need a motion to go into executive session, please.
I'm making a motion to go into executive session for pending and potential litigation.
I'll second that.
We have a motion by Commissioner Stover, a second by Commissioner Galloway. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We stand adjourned.